For those of you who are sports fans that might be going just totally crazy without sports, I wore my Eagles hat today. Today's the NFL Draft. You know, if you're really desperate, you can turn on and watch the draft. It gets your fix that way. So... The portion... Any... My computer just told me that Lynn became the host. It just confused me for a moment.
What?
Wow!
She's a lot better looking than you are.
Are you admin? You're admin. I made you the host.
Oh, no. It came up and said Lynn was the host on my computer.
Really?
Wow!
Well, that's interesting.
And I have no idea why my name's admin, but I don't know. I could live with it.
You can change that. You can change that.
I have to come up with some kind of clever mantra for that. Anyhow, in our Philippians passage that we have been looking at, the verse we're going to focus in on today or the portion is verse 7. And it reads, "And the peace of God, which transcends all understanding, will guard your hearts and your minds in Christ Jesus." Would you please pray with me as we get started here today? Oh God, thank you for the time in the middle of all the unusual to come to open your word, to think about it, to have it speak to us, to have it call us, to comfort us, to challenge us. Be with us in our conversations. Be with those who weren't able to join us today. Help us always to look to you to be our rock and our strength. In Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Well, if Scott's ready to bring up the video for Max, we'll listen to him and then come back and converse about it afterwards. Just a reminder, everybody, Pastor Scott does have another meeting. If he's got to go to it, if you stay on, we can stay on together. So if he has to leave, if you click off, then I think you're gone. But we can stay on. We did that last week, so...
Okay.
Thanks Pastor Scott. If you don't mind bringing up the video for today?
Sure. We got it right here. You guys hear it? See it?
Oh yeah!
Sixty days ago, Tom was an easygoing, laid-back kind of guy. Nothing seemed to face him. While others complained about the storm clouds threatening their lives, Tom seemed to live in his own personal bubble of sunshine. But fifty days ago, Tom started having bad headaches. All day, every day. Twenty days ago, worn out from the pain, lack of sleep, and inability to think straight, he went to his doctor about the problem. The doctor examined him and concluded the migraines might be due to an allergic reaction. He suggested some changes to Tom's diet, which Tom followed, but the headaches got worse. Ten days ago, Tom had to take a leave of absence from work. For days, he lay in his bed in the dark, trying not to move or think. One day ago, with no food left in the house, Tom tried to go to the store, but he passed out in the middle of the kitchen floor. When he woke up three hours later, he called 911. The ambulance arrived and hurried him to the local hospital. One minute ago, Tom got the results of the extensive tests from the last 24 hours. As he sat there alone in the pre-op room, he was anything but cool, calm, and collected. In a few minutes, an orderly would be arriving to wheel him off to the operating room. There, a team of neurosurgeons would try to remove a cancerous tumor from his brain. The doctor had indicated they had less than a 30% chance of removing all the tumor. And even if they did, he said, it was likely that Tom would have some motor skill damage as a result of the operation. The easygoing, carefree guy had disappeared completely. What had once been calm waters and gentle breezes was now a perfect storm of raging currents and hurricane-force winds. And the questions raced through Tom's mind. Why had this happened to him? Where was God in this dark and stormy time? And what hope did he have for the future? Perhaps you can relate to Tom's story. Life is humming along nicely when bam, a number of crises occur all at once. A layoff plus a recession. A disease plus a job transfer. A relationship breakup plus a college rejection. You can handle one challenge, but two or three at a time? You're blindsided by an unexpected crisis that keeps getting worse and worse. You try to battle your way through but keep getting knocked down by one bad event after another. Maybe you, like Tom, are wondering where God is in the middle of this terrible storm. Is he anywhere near? Will you even survive? Peter and the disciples could relate. When we read that they were caught in the storm on the Sea of Galilee, it's easy to overlook just how dangerous the situation was. Such storms in the region were akin to a sumo wrestler's belly flop on a kiddie pool. The Northern Valley acted like a wind tunnel compressing and hosing squalls onto the lake. Waves as tall as ten feet were coming. This combination of high winds plus high waves made the situation treacherous. It was one thing for Peter and the disciples to battle the winds. That was enough of a challenge. But when you add the winds plus the waves, it was a recipe for disaster. Today, mariners might call such a tempest a perfect storm. Not perfect in the sense of ideal, but perfect in the sense of combining factors. Every element works together to create the insurmountable disaster. What's more, it's clear from Matthew's Gospel that disciples battled the storm for some time before Jesus appeared. The disciples' journey began at nightfall. Jesus had performed the miracle of feeding the 5,000 earlier in the day and then had sent the disciples on ahead so he could spend some time in prayer. Meanwhile, the disciples were in trouble far away from land, for a strong wind had risen and they were fighting heavy waves. When does Christ come to them? About 3:00 in the morning. If evening began at 6:00 and Christ came at 3:00 in the morning, the disciples were alone in the storm for nine hours. Nine impetuous hours, long enough for more than one disciple to ask, "Where is Jesus?" He knows we're in the boat. Is God anywhere near? It's the question we all ask when hit with the perfect storm. And Paul's answer to that question is concise and clear. "The peace of God, which surpasses all understanding, will guard your hearts and minds through Christ Jesus." As we do our part, rejoice in the Lord, pursue a gentle spirit, pray about everything, and cling to gratitude, God does his part. He bestows upon us the peace of God. Note that this is not a peace from God. Our Father gives us the very peace of God. He downloads the tranquility of the throne room into our world, resulting in an inexplicable calm. We should be worried, but we aren't. We should be upset, but we're comforted. The peace of God transcends all logic and scheming and efforts to explain it. This kind of peace is not just a human achievement. It is a gift from above. Jesus said, "Peace I leave with you. My peace I give to you. I do not give to you as the world gives. Do not let your hearts be troubled, and do not be afraid." Jesus promises you his version of peace. The peace that calmed his heart when he was falsely accused. The peace that steadied his voice when he spoke to Pilate. The peace that kept his thoughts clear and heart pure as he hung on the cross. This was his peace. This can be your peace. Paul tells us more about the peace of God. He says it guards our hearts and minds through Christ Jesus. God takes responsibility for our hearts and minds. As we celebrate him and pray to him, he constructs a fortress around us, protecting us from the attacks of the devil. Paul had firsthand knowledge of this kind of peace and protection from God, for he had also endured his share of perfect storms. He had learned to believe in God's sovereignty and trust his protection and rely on his mercy. Paul's past could have caused him to experience immense feelings of guilt that brought him anxiety and robbed him of peace. After all, he had orchestrated the deaths of Christians. He was an ancient version of a terrorist, taking believers into custody and then spilling their blood. He was also a legalist to the core. Before he knew Christ, he had spent a lifetime trying to save himself. His salvation depended upon his perfection, on his performance. But then came the Damascus Road moment. Jesus appeared. And once Paul saw Jesus, he couldn't see anymore. He couldn't see any more value in his resume. He couldn't see any more merit in his merits, worth in his good works. He couldn't see any more reasons to boast about anything he had done. And he couldn't see any option except to spend the rest of his life talking less about himself and more about Jesus. He became the great poet of grace. "But all these things that I once thought very worthwhile, now I've thrown them all away, so that I can put my trust and hope in Christ alone." And in exchange for self-salvation, God gave Paul righteousness. Now I am right with God, not because I followed the law, but because I believed in Christ. Paul gave his past to Jesus, period. He surrendered it all to Christ. As a result, he would write, "I'm still not all I should be, but I am bringing all my energies to bear on this one thing. Forgetting the past and looking forward to what lies ahead, I strain to reach the end of the race and receive the prize for which God is calling us up to heaven because of what Jesus did for us." Paul knew what it meant to face the end of the race. When he penned these famous words to the Philippians, he had endured his own perfect storm on the Mediterranean Sea. On his final voyage, Paul had been placed on a ship in Cesaria destined for Italy. Sometimes prisoners were on the ship, presumably condemned men who were bound for the Roman arena. The ship enjoyed smooth sailing until they reached Sidon, where they changed vessels. They reached nearby Sinidus with great difficulty. From there, they sailed south under the shelter of Crete until they reached the port of Fair Havens about halfway along the island. And Fair Havens was not fair on the eyes. It received this name from the Chamber of Commerce, I suppose, in hope of attracting business. The sailors didn't want to stay there. They knew they couldn't reach Rome before winter, but they preferred the port of Phoenix. Paul tried to convince them otherwise. By this time, he was a seasoned seafarer. He knew the danger of a winter voyage. But in the eyes of the captain, Paul was nothing but a Jewish preacher. So they weighed anchor and set sail. But not long after, a tempestuous headwind arose called Eurocluyden. What a great word! It's a compound of the Greek term, eurós, the east wind, and the Latin word, aquillo, the north wind. The temperature dropped, the sails whipped, the waves frothed. The sailors searched for land and they couldn't see it. They looked at the storm and they couldn't avoid it. The components of the perfect storm were gathering. Individually, these elements were manageable, but collectively, they were formidable. The crew hoisted the lifeboat aboard and frapped the vessel. They lowered the sea anchor, jettisoned the cargo. They threw equipment overboard, but nothing worked. Now, when neither sun nor stars appeared for many days and no small tempest beat on us, all hope that we would be saved was finally given up. The perfect storm took its toll. The disciples weathered the storm on the Sea of Galilee for nine hours. The crew on Paul's ship weathered their storm for 14 days. Nine hours would be enough. But two weeks of sunless days, bouncing and climbing toward the heavens, then plunging toward the sea? The sailors lost all reason for hope. They gave up, just like Tom did. Perhaps you're in the same place. You're bouncing about in a northeaster and have done all you can do to survive. You've tightened the ship, lowered the anchor, consulted the bank, changed your diet, called the lawyers, tightened your budget. You've gone for counseling, rehab, or therapy. Yet the sea churns with angry foam. And you're too worn out to fight anymore. You're ready to let the storm sweep you away. If that fear is coming at you from all sides, hear God's voice today. Let him speak to you just as he did at that moment to the sailors. Paul stood in the midst of them and said, "Men, you should have listened to me and not have sailed from Crete and incurred this disaster and loss. And now I urge you to take heart, for there will be no loss of life among you, but only of the ship." Notice, Paul began with a rebuke. The sailors were in this crisis because they didn't listen to him. Like many of us, they were in the middle of a storm of their own making. But while Paul's initial words contain a rebuke, he goes on to relate three crucial promises that can give us peace. First, we can know that during any storm, heaven has helpers to help us. Paul said to the men, "There stood by me this night an angel." On the deck of a sinking ship in a raging storm, Paul received a visitor from heaven. Remember, this visit came 14 days after the storm had started. 14 days of silent but stormy skies. Perhaps you can relate? Have you prayed and heard nothing? Are you floundering in the land between an offered and answered prayer? Do you feel the press of Satan's mortar and pestle? If so, don't give up. Know that you have been heard in heaven. Angelic armies have been dispatched. Reinforcements have been rallied. God promises, "I will contend with him who contends with you." Remain before the Lord, for those who wait on the Lord shall renew their strength, and they shall mount up with wings like eagles, and they shall run and not be weary; they shall walk and not be faint." A second promise we can grasp in the middle of a storm is that heaven has a place for us. Paul said, "There stood by me this night an angel of the God to whom I belong." Paul knew that he belonged to God, for he had given his life to him. And he knew that when he gave his life to God, the Lord took responsibility of him. Jesus said, "I am the good shepherd. I know my sheep, and my sheep know me." He also instructed, "Do not call anyone on earth father, for you have one Father, and he is in heaven. You are God's child, and he is your Father." So we can have peace in the midst of the storm, because first, we're not alone; second, we belong to God; and third, we are in the Lord's service. Paul said to the crew, "For there stood by me this night an angel of the God to whom I belong and whom I serve." The Lord had given Paul the assignment of carrying the gospel to Rome. Paul had not yet arrived there, so God was not yet finished with him. Paul knew he would survive. Now, most of us don't have a clear message like Paul's, but we do have the assurance that we will not live one day less than we are supposed to live. If God has worked for us to do, he will keep us alive to do it. This is not to say we won't have problems. Paul had his share, as evidenced by what he said next. "Now I urge you to take heart, for there will be no loss of life among you, but only of the ship." It's not easy to lose your ship. It's not easy to part with the vessel that has kept you afloat. Without it, you fear you will sink. And you will, for a while. Waves will sweep over you. Anxiety will suck you under. "But take heart," says Paul. "Take heart," says Christ. "In this world, you will have trouble, but be brave. I have defeated the world." You know you can lose it all, only to discover that you haven't. God has been there all along. God has never promised a life without storms, but he has promised to be there when you face them. The theologian Henry Nowen once wrote about a lesson of trust he learned from a family of trapeze artists known as the Rodleys. He visited with them for a time, watching them fly through the air. When he asked one of them the secret of their art, the acrobat replied, "When I fly, I have simply to stretch out my arms and hands and wait for my catcher to catch me and pull me safely over the apron." A flyer must fly, and a catcher must catch. And the flyer must trust with outstretched arms that his catcher will be there for him. In the great trapeze act of life, God is the catcher, and we are the flyers. We trust, period. We rely solely on God's ability to catch us. And as we do, a wonderful thing happens. We fly. Our Father has never dropped anyone. His grip is sturdy and his hands are open. Paul recognized this, and it led him to declare, "I know the Lord will continue to rescue me from every trip, trap, snare, and pitfall of evil, and carry me safely to his heavenly kingdom." As Tom waited for the orderly to arrive, he felt just like that trapeze artist, flying in the air with no net in sight to catch him. His mind raced from one anxious thought about the outcome to the next. But just then, a sound coming close by caught his attention. He had been sharing the pre-op room with another patient, a small boy who was also undergoing a procedure. The boy's mother had come into the room and was reading him a story. Her words brought back a time in Tom's life when his mother would read stories to him. Every night, as she tucked him into bed without fail, she would ask him to share his worries and concerns. Then she would pray with Tom and ask God to give him the strength and peace to overcome those fears. Tom also remembered that his mom always ended these prayers with a promise. "Tommy, you don't need to worry. You're safe. God has you in his arms." Tom heard a noise at the front of the room and saw that the orderly had arrived. He took in a deep breath and repeated those words his mom had said to him. "You don't need to worry. You're safe. God has you in his arms." In that moment, Tom chose to let God be the great catcher. He chose to cling to God. He chose to receive the peace that God was offering to him. "In this world, you will have trouble. But in the midst of that trouble, God will extend his arms. He will send his angels. He will catch you and carry you in his arms. When you belong to him, you can have peace in the midst of the storm." The same Jesus who sent the angel to Paul sends this message to you. "When you pass through the waters, I will be with you." So if today you find yourself in the midst of a perfect storm, know that Jesus can offer you his perfect peace. Choose to place yourself entirely in his care. As you do, you will find it possible, yes, possible, to be anxious for nothing.
Well, welcome back. So the perfect storm, as Max talked about it, was the combination of coming together of a variety of things. So what are some things, events, challenges that can add up to a perfect storm in our lives? Your own life or just in general? What are some of the things that can happen?
We can identify with a man in a video. We had a nephew, probably about thirty, yeah, thirty years old a few years ago. He had a brain tumor and had to go to Mayo Clinic. And it came out good, but it still was cancerous. And he survived. He and his family and all of us had a lot of faith that he would survive.
So a whole variety of illnesses
Right.
can fit into a perfect storm. Certainly, some of that profound nature. What other kinds of things build up the perfect storm?
Just a bad day, I think, you know? Just, this seems like, you know, you know, when you get up in the morning and, you know, maybe you have like a flat tire or something like that, you know? Or, you know, or maybe your credit card's not working anymore or something. And it just, it just snowballs.
Well, that's, that's kind of the point here, is that the, the snowball, the cascade effect of things, most of which we've all dealt with in some form or another. And we do that on a regular basis. We, you know, it's just the way it is. That's just how it is. But when you start talking about, you know, this thing, and then that thing, and then this thing, and then that thing, and that's when it becomes challenging. That's what brings about the perfect storm. You know, is that there's so many components that have come into place at the same time. You know, for certain things to happen, not unusual, but for this one to happen, and that one to happen, and this one to happen, totally bizarre, totally unusual. You know, and if you've, if you've ever fixed things, and that's not one of my strengths, but I've heard this from people, so... But, you know, if you work with this, you know, there are certain components or things that go wrong, but it's really weird to see multiple things go wrong at the same time. You know, it's really strange. You said something about having a flat tire. Well, you know, how about having a flat right, right front and a left rear tire? At the same time? I mean, you know, we all, most of us carry some sort of spare. We never carry a second one, right? Whoever needs two spare tires at one time? So, you know, I don't know, anybody here ever had two flats at the same time?
No.
Yes?
Yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, I was on the way to the beach one time.
Oh yeah?
Yep, yep, on the way to the beach one time. Two flat tires, one spare tire, two kids, all by myself.
Not good.
No, it wasn't good at all. Played it through.
What was, what about a month ago that Melissa thought she was going through a heavy storm? What was?
Her car broke down in the hospital parking garage.
Oh, oh yeah, yeah, really. Yeah, and then, yeah, and then they keep telling her that, you know, they don't have the right tow trucks or... And eventually, eventually, actually, what happened? The AAA dispatcher said, "We don't do that."
No. Were you allowed to take it out of a garage?
Yeah. And it was just, it was, it was bizarre. It was, you know, it was just the craziest of things.
She was really frustrated that Sunday when she was...
Oh, yeah. You know, and in some cases, you think about, it might not be so bad, a friend of ours to take, brought her into the hospital. And her car, well, her car, he knew what was wrong with it, but he couldn't fix it right there. You know, and he just, he, he would have had the ability to fix a lot of things, but he couldn't do that. Yeah, you know, and it's just one thing after another, and they all add up. And sometimes even make it very difficult to do the task. I mean, sometimes you can substitute. Sometimes you can make do or whatever, but well, you know, that, like, I can't do what Plan B was because that doesn't work. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of that. And that, that's really, that's when we start to feel it the most. You know, most of us have developed enough coping skills to deal with something. Maybe even to deal with the next thing. It's when you go three, four, five deep at a time that it becomes, you know, incredibly challenging, and especially depending on what they are. Martin Luther knew something about that and that a storm could be incredibly intense and could last incredibly a long time. He penned the words that are fairly well-known to us. "A mighty fortress is our God. "A mighty fortress is our God, a bulwark never failing, our helper amid the flood of mortal ills prevailing." That there would sometimes be a flood of mortal ills, you know, things that happen in this life, things that come along, things that just, just happen, and that they would be, you know, but God will prevail over them. That's, you know, some words we frequently sing on, for, for Reformation Sunday.
Well, the other thing is, Melissa was really worried about you.
Well, yeah.
When you already have one worry, like you were talking earlier.
That's right.
And then you have another thing, another big problem, you just kind of fall apart. I mean, I'm not saying she fell apart that Sunday, but she was close to it.
It was, yeah, and it's, that's when you start going, "Really?" You know, "Really?" You know, they haven't all occurred on top of one another, but for me, you know, I think about this, and I actually, at this point, find it entertaining, in a weird sense of way. For the last two years, I can't do anything that looks like a medical procedure or thing without a complication. I just can't. I just, it doesn't happen. I mean, it's, it's crazy. And, you know, it's just the way it's been, but it's absolutely crazy. Now, fortunately, most of them haven't been piled this way. They've been spread out, and I have a, a thing on, you know, each occasion. But it, it is kind of strange, and it is really weird. Any of you familiar with an author, Flannery O'Connor?
I think so.
I'll take that as a resounding though. But, and, and, you know, I think that some of you might have read or whatever some of her stuff, but there's, she offered up this quote at one point that I, I came upon. "All human nature vigorously resist grace, because grace changes us, and the change is painful." And that is kind of what we're talking about here in terms of being able to, to look at the bigger picture, is that we're looking for God's grace. We're looking to find God's grace operative and active. But sometimes people really want to resist the grace, because grace forces us to deal with stuff that's not necessarily easy. And most importantly, it may force us to change. And for most people, change is painful. If it's not, the only, if the only reason it's painful is because we don't like it. You know, we just don't like change. There's, there's only a small group of people that like change, but I'm going to tell you something. Let's you in on a secret that I think I've discussed. Even people who seemingly like change, they only like the change they like. You, you impose a different change on them, they're not happy.
Yeah, no kidding.
Well, yeah, well, but you see, we don't always own that one, that part of the truth. We're not always like, excuse me, we don't always note that part of the truth, you know? And part of
You must be looking forward to the next two months then.
Oh, yeah. I've got experience up to four months of doing that. So I, I figure I'm pretty, I'm pretty good for a while yet.
And if we need help with that, we can call you, right?
Yeah, you're, you're welcome to do that. But one of the things I learned about that, though, was that some of, at least what made me or got me through it, was just what makes me tick. And I, I don't know if that's going to be pertinent. I'll have to sort that out as we go forward. But, but the, the change thing, I mean, I'm, I'm joking about it in part, but I also really started years ago to become aware of that about myself. Because there's certain things I don't like differently. You know, I just, I kind of like this this way, that way. And some of them are silly and stupid and, and small and, you know.
Like your coffee.
Well, that might be one of them, I guess. But, you know, I just, you know, and yet, and yet, in, in my ministry, there were a lot of times where I'm the guy that was changing everything. Or at least it looked that way to people, mostly because I was changing things they didn't want changed.
There you go.
Well, you know, but it occurred to me in, you know, at some point that, well, yeah, I like to change this or that, but I also don't like to change other things. And so that, you know, Flannery O'Connor was pretty much right about that in terms of, you know, one of the things that is problematic about change is that it, that it, that we don't always like it, and that to really understand God's grace usually involves change, because it usually involves some experience of God's grace, right? And if we're going to experience God's grace, something's going on. Something's going on, and it's probably not all good stuff. And so we're kind of resistant in some ways, and that's, you know, sort of tragic.
Is that what's going on now?
Well, maybe, you know.
I think so.
You know, but we just don't.
Can we, can we pause for a minute? Lynn, are you trying to get in? I see her phone keeps flashing.
That's just because I'm on my phone, I guess. I, I was not able to get in other, you know, I tried, but I couldn't, so.
I just keep hearing, I keep hearing chitter chatter there, but you can't really make it out. So I was wondering if you were trying to get a word in edgewise or, or just?
No, no, no.
All right.
Somebody's outside mowing, maybe that's what you're hearing in the distance. I don't know.
All right, thanks.
Yep, thank you. No, I'm glad you noticed, because I don't, wouldn't necessarily always notice that. Well, as we think about the text today, it begins with the phrase, "The peace of God." The word that the Bible uses for that is shalom. Y'all familiar with the word shalom?
Yes.
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 I think most of us are.
Yes.
Well, shalom is a word that really doesn't translate from the Hebrew, which is shalom, to English. Usually, we translate it peace. That's really pretty good, to tell me, but it's not really all that there is out of the word shalom. So I'm going to ask you all to be hu, be my human thesaurus. What other words might you use? Might you think, you know, peace, you hear peace. What are the synonyms? What are other words? Maybe some that, you know, take a different spin on peace, but still, there's synonyms for peace. What are there?
How about comfort?
Okay.
You took mine, Tony.
Sorry, Lynn.
In that case, in that case, we have an amen for comfort, okay.
I like the word grace.
Okay.
Yes. I like calm.
Calm, okay.
Calm.
Yeah, that was my word, calm.
It sounds like, it sounds like shalom should be translated into more than one word, almost like a little phrase.
Yeah, probably. Well, that's kind of why I'm, we're playing this little game.
Right, okay.
You know?
Sorry.
No, but you're right, because, because, well, I, if you look up some words in a dictionary, you're going to find how many meanings.
Yeah.
And lots of times, the meaning is, you know, for those of you who see very clear distinctions in words, well, I guess I should say for those of us, at times, you know, it's very simple to say, "Oh, yeah, that's, that's, there's different meanings here." Other times, they're not so clear. But if you look up, you know, peace, or in a, in a dictionary, or if you have a, if you look up shalom in a Hebrew dictionary, you're going to see a lot of different things, especially if it gives you opportunities for, like, synonyms for it. You know, so anything else you could think of?
Well, it's two words, actually, but I can't think of a word otherwise. Letting go.
Okay.
I was thinking, I was thinking, understanding.
Okay. Yep, I, I think everybody's given some other
How about content?
Content? Well, now he took my word, everybody, so that makes you feel better. That was, that was the one I was saving to pitch.
Amen. Amen.
But no, that was, that was the one I kind of tucked away, like, oh, if nobody wants to play with me, I'll suggest this one. You know, you could see how these are all synonyms, right? Even if there's small nuanced differences, you can see how that is. So that this shalom, that when you start talking about the peace of God, it's a, it's a very big picture. You know, it's not just some, you know, it's not just this or that. I mean, what, what are some other ways in which we define peace? You know, obviously, the big thing is, everybody thinks peace and war are opposites, right? So peace is no war. You know, what, what kind of peace are most parents interested in?
Screaming in the house or whatever.
Peace and quiet.
Quiet!
There's a funny children's book called Five Minute Peace about an elephant who could, and her kids would never leave her alone. She went to the bathroom and got in the bathtub, and still they came in with all their toys, and, and she finally left them in the bathtub and went out and had a cup of tea and had five-minute peace. But there you go. That's what parents long for.
Quiet, you know, and, and of course, a wise parent knows, especially if you have multiple children, and it's quiet, you know to be careful or beware or go search, right?
Something's wrong.
You're, you're thinking about, well, I really like quiet, but if you get it, uh, you know, so, all right.
That's what we do with dogs, too. The other day, Piper was really quiet. I was like, "Where's Piper?" And all of a sudden, she had a plastic spoon, and she was chewing it. I was like, "Oh, man."
Oh, no.
It's like a kid.
Yeah, in that respect, yes, yes. So other ways of thinking about peace, other phrases, like trouble-free. You know, peace is trouble-free, or, or here, here's another word. I actually did have two of them, Tony, so you only got one of mine. Serenity.
Oh.
I want to do one.
That's a good one.
Resting.
Yeah, restful.
Yeah, you know, so those are other ways we can think about what peace is, you know, and that, that really blows up the word in a way. You know, that you get to see the, the fullness, the richness, the vastness of thinking about the peace of God. And, and Max Lucado made a big deal about that the term that's used in the Bible is the peace of God. I'm going to let you in on a little secret here, in case you didn't know, if you didn't know it, repetition is one of the six laws of education. When, when the Bible, when this text was originally written, it was written in Greek, okay? You remember all the time you spent in school learning what a preposition is? Nobody ever learned that in Greek class. There are no prepositions.
Yeah.
There are no prepositions in Latin and Greek or whatever. So there are, there are, you know, there, there are other ways of getting a sense of that, but you, sometimes we have to make our best interpretation, understanding of the preposition that goes there in English. You know, so, because there just are. There, there's, you know, there are different cases in, in, in both, in ancient languages, the cases, you, you could have multiple numbers of, of prepositions that go in there, and you just have to figure it out from what the word is or the phrases. But Max appropriately made an interesting point about, if for no other reason, we have always translated in English as the peace of God. That it's something that God has, not, it's not, it's not just given to us by God. It's not peace from God, but it's the peace of God, the peace we have in God and within God. And because of our connection to God, we have this peace. And it's, it's kind of a, it's nuanced, but I think it's very real, if we really get down to, to sorting that out. Because if it was a peace that just came from God, and we just thought of it that way, we might be pretty challenged as the perfect storm pieces start to stack up, right? Because, you know, how do I have this peace from God when this stuff's all stacking up, and God doesn't seem to be doing anything about? But the peace of God kind of comes from us, and, and helps us deal with those things that are stacking up in front of us, if you will. So, you know, that, that was an interesting and, I think, helpful little, little piece or tidbit of this that just kind of propels us to a deeper, deeper understanding and, and appreciation for what, what, what we're talking about here. The text then says that that peace of God, which transcends, transcend is kind of a, that's a notable word. It's not an everyday word, you know? What, what's it mean to transcend something? To go across, to go beyond, you know? It's, it's, yep. I'm sorry, I missed that.
You think go above?
Yep, you could use above.
I kind of thought cross all barriers.
That, that, yeah, 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 they're all good. Yeah, that's all part of them. I, you know, honestly, this case, I didn't look it up. I put my own in there definition. So for all I know, those are all the first things my dictionary would have told me had I looked it up. But yeah.
King James says it's pass, passes.
Yes, it passes.
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 It surpasses, yeah.
Yeah, which is why we go, I think of, you know, it goes beyond. Because it passes, it goes, you know, it's, it's just more than you could imagine, kind of thing. And then it talks about awe, understanding. I think awe is, is a humongous word here, you know? Because, you know, sometimes I think, I feel like, and I think in my experiences with people have been, that we get caught in the idea that we're actually going to understand it all.
No, I'm going to ask God when I get there.
I, I, I hear you said, "I have this humongous list in my head." Like, because my, you know, I, I, I say with some, you know, reservations about, you know, I don't want to be putting on God stuff, but it strikes me that, at least for me, well, I believe heaven is the greatest and most awesome thing you can imagine. For me, part of that is like Paul going to the Agropolis in Athens to sit and talk among the teachers. I'm thinking, like, I get to spend an eternity in Q and A. And I, you know, and yeah, that's, that's kind of like my vision.
And never grow tired of that, right?
Well, I'm not going to. I don't know, maybe God will get sick of me, but, you know? But, but, you know, I just think that this is, that's kind of how I envision it. And I, I have an old friend who at one time was a parishioner, who, who was fond of trying to burst my bubble. She would always look at me and go, "Now, you know better than that. You know in heaven, all knowledge will be perfect, and you won't care." And I tell her, "How dare you ruin heaven for me?" If I want, if I want heaven to be a Q and A, it could be a Q and A. So just keep your, keep your theological thinking to yourself in those forms. So, and that was just kind of a thing she and I would exchange fairly regularly in a study group, just because she knew, she knew I was. study group just because she knew, she knew I was, that's how I, I saw that. But we get this idea that we can understand everything. Now, I'm assuming, you know?
I'm going to get going, guys.
Okay, yeah, you got to go. Thanks, God.
Peace, God. God bless you.
See you Sunday.
Okay.
Or else tonight.